It is a little after six o'clock. I would like to, on Thursday, May 25th, 2017, I would like to call the Clearlake City Council meeting and Redevelop Accessory Agency to order, hosted here at Clearlake City Hall, at 14050 Olympic Drive, Clearlake, California, 95422. And Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Here.
Mayor Kerdoff?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett, would you please give us the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. And if you'd remain standing, could I have Pastor Saffron come up? He's going to lead us in our invocation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm here for, I'm Todd.
Hi, Todd.
I'm here for Kevin from Cowrie Chapel.
There you go. Please, if you would.
Okay.
And the mic's there if you need it.
Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight and we ask that you would come and give us wisdom, Lord God, to make good decisions. Father, and we ask that you would keep this time and order, Lord God, everything would be done orderly, Lord God. Father, we ask that you would bless each one that showed up, Lord God, to give their service tonight. And we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Mr. Folsom, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Very much. Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? And now moving on to presentation. I have the pleasure of presenting this. I see Ginny's in the audience there. And I'm going to ask a couple of our members who I know served in the armed forces, Councilmember Bennett and Acting Chief Sully, will you try to get the podium to this Come up. Get your real place. Brian?
Yes, sir.
Brian, would you join us? I apologize. What branch?
Air Force.
Air Force. All right. Thank you all very much. May is Military Recognition Month. And I'd like to introduce, if you don't know, someone who's known for quite a while, had the pleasure of serving with Ginny Craven, who really kind of took on something. Has started out very small, but what she has done, and I'll let her speak about this a little later, she created a program that delivers things that are missing for our people that are overseas, our military overseas, that makes their life just a little bit better. And that program is Operation Tangle Mike. And I'm happy that she's here to receive this proclamation. So if you'll bear with me, let me read this. For Military Appreciation Month, May 2017. Whereas the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness enumerate in our Declaration of Independence, secured by the Constitution and Bill of Rights, and enjoyed by every citizen of the United States, are a direct result of the members of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas the sacrifices made by the members of the United States Armed Forces and the family members who support them preserve the liberties that enrich our nation, our state, and our city. Whereas the citizens have a proud history of service in the United States Armed Forces in both times of peace and times of war. And whereas many citizens of the city of Clearlake continue to serve on active duty and in the National Guard, in the reserve components of the United States Armed Forces. And now therefore be it proclaimed, the City of Clearlake, City Council does hereby wish to recognize and honor all members of the United States Armed Forces, past and present, as well as their families, for their service and sacrifice and hereby designates May 2017 as Military Appreciation Month in the city of Clearlake. Further, we encourage all citizens to show our gratitude by the appropriate display of flags and ribbons during the designated period, dated this 25th day of May, 2017. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, if I might, is there anyone who's served in the armed services? If I could just ask you to stand? Be recognized?
Come on, Bill.
Come on, Bill. Stand up. Thank you so much. In our lifetimes, and from the jungles of Vietnam, Iraq, Iran, in current battles against terrorism around this globe, it's our military, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, that are there doing it, and they're overseas. And I think, right now, as Ginny will attest, a lot of us are not paying attention to those folks who are deployed. And would you like to have a couple minutes to say something?
First of all, thank you for this. We will make copies. We'll put one in every care package next month, so that'll be 104 copies going in 10 countries. We are in our 14th year of shipping care packages. We've now shipped over 19,000 care packages out of Lake County to deployed military. Nearly everyone is from this community or related to someone from this community. And Operation Tangle Mike stands for Operation Thanks Much. There's a red barrel in the lobby. We have them around the community, everywhere in this county. And I encourage you to donate. Shipping alone costs us $1,800 per month. And then there's $3,000 to fill those boxes. We fundraise continually, but it's the least we can do. It's incumbent upon us to serve those that serve us. So please support our mission.
Thanks.
And just in closing, we've got a big weekend coming up with Memorial, Memorial Day holiday. And I'd just like to remember, as we're gathering with our friends and our families, it isn't just about barbecues. It's about remembering those who served and who gave all, and who continue to serve today. So with that, again, to our military members here tonight, thank you very much for your service. We're indebted to you. And for those who are currently serving, thank you. Next, we have a presentation of the Tobacco Education Youth Coalition. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Can I pass this? Can stop in the block if I?
Well, I think it would be good if our folks in TV land could see it.
But I feel like I'm going to block you guys. Do you want me to put it down on the ground?
Yeah. If you can put it down on the ground, that'd be great for by the podium. They would, they can see what you're talking about. Thank you so much.
So my name is Gina Lyle-Gurfin, and I work with Public Health, the Health Services Department. And we have a tobacco education program. There's one in every county in California. Part of what we do is we work with the youth. And we started with the youth coalition that's out of Canotta Education Center, working with high school aged students, educating them on tobacco environment, health risks, et cetera, targeting abuse in tobacco advertising. As part of that, we did a project that's called a Photo Voice Project. And in your folder, you will see that it talks about what Photo Voice is. It's a social action. It gives people who otherwise might not have a voice, a way to express something by taking photographs in the environment and then commenting on them. There's a yellow paper that's called Showed. And after they take the photographs in the environment of tobacco or garbage, tobacco garbage or products, then what they do is they write about it. So I have some here, and I'm just going to read them really quickly. This was by, taken by a student named Seth Smalley. And some of the comments that were made, I don't know if people can see, but there's a crack pipe and a bunch of tobacco garbage that he found in a beautiful field. So it's quite an attractive photograph. And this is what they wrote about it. It says, "What is seen here? He is holding a broken crack pipe in his hand with beautiful scenery in the background. What's really happening? The unseen story. That the nasty crack pipe has ruined the beauty of the picture. How does this relate to our lives, or my life personally? This relates to our lives because it affects us. Why are things this way? Things are this way because tobacco companies and other people make drugs look cool, but they are not. How could this image educate people? This image could educate people not to ruin the land of their community with nasty addictions. What can I do about it? Spread awareness." So that was the comment that was made about this picture. The next picture was done by Tanari Dukes. And these are the comments that were made about this picture. It says, "What is seen here? Cigarettes and tobacco products. What is really happening? The unseen story. There's tobacco products all over the place, and it's not necessarily a good thing. How does this relate to our lives or my life personally? It relates to me because a lot of my family smokes or have quit over the years. Why are things this way? Because tobacco is addicting, and although it is terrible and can cause cancer, they still smoke. How could this image educate people? It could show people that cigarettes are bad and show people how much trash and grossness it can cause. What can I do about it? Tell people to smoke less, tell them what it does to their, to them and people around the lake." The last one, well, that I will, that I'll read about is from Maya Dinamore. And she's got a picture of a, looks like a swisher or a little cigar in the midst of the beautiful grass. "What is seen here? A colorful cigar package beautifully contrasted with the grass and dew, but still shows that it is all trash. What's really happening? Someone just threw away a cigar package, something disgusting somewhere, probably very pretty. How does this relate to our lives? It affects our environment in a bad way and gives the wrong message to kids. Why are things this way? Because the companies make packaging eye-catching, and it draws people in to see what it is and maybe want to try it. How could this image educate people? Even though it's pretty, it's still garbage. What can I do about it? When I see people I know smoking, I can talk to them about why it's bad in a nice way and ask them to pass it on to others when they see them." And the last one doesn't have any comments, but I'll just share this picture by Ally Fielden. Steps, and there was little cigarette butts along the steps and such. We are actually going to be expanding our tobacco youth program with funding that's coming from Proposition 56 into the program. So we'll be having one in Kelseyville, Kelseyville High, and looking towards Upper Lake as well. So we're trying to go all the way around the lake. The other thing that the tobacco education youth do is they educate their peers, because oftentimes they hear the message better from their peers. And so some of the pictures that I sent around were events that they've done. They've done birthday, they do World No Tobacco Day, Cake Butt Day, and things like that. It's been pretty successful at this school, and we have a really strong coalition. I wish they could have been here. I had four of them who said that they would come way back when we were planning it, and then for various reasons, they weren't. And who knows? They might have been a little embarrassed, but nonetheless. Were there any questions?
Just like a compliment, you, thank you very much for doing that. And I appreciate that what the kids did. I wish we could have met them tonight.
I know.
But it's a busy time of year.
It is. And I hope maybe we can get some here. And it's really do different projects. And actually, I spoke, I think it was with Melissa, about leaving this up for display here for a short time. So is there a spot I can pop them?
Melissa.
Oh, hi. You don't have to.
We'll probably put them out in the lobby on that table right outside the door.
Okay. So it's okay if I put them in? Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question before you leave.
Oh, sure.
I appreciate seeing you at multiple events, some that are in the same place where I work.
Yeah.
But what I'm wondering is, as a city government, what would you suggest we do to help you be more successful?
With the tobacco education program in general, what we try to do is we don't lobby, and we can only provide information, but we do work with city. I have done some key informant interviews with policymakers around the county, their private, you know, interviews over the phone about their own opinions, and we take that information in. We do look towards, I know that you have a healthy Clearlake, you know, initiative here and a collaborative. I'm going to start attending that, because we do also look to certain types of policy and ordinance, supporting and educating and giving information about how that can make a big difference in the tobacco use, the marketing to youth. So those are things that I will be concentrating on. We're starting a whole new funding cycle and a whole new plan. So that is one way that you could help, because I will be coming around and attending some of those meetings. And having a tobacco retail license is one way. There's many other ways. Limiting flavored tobaccos sales, because those are the ones that are targeted towards youth, certain types of advertising, those things can be done through policy, through a council, or through a actual county supervisors.
Thank you.
Yeah. So thank you.
Any other questions? Now, thank you very much. Very well. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time that you can come and address the council on any non-agendized item for three minutes. If you would, and you want to speak to the council, come up and introduce yourself and your topic.
Good evening. I hadn't seen you people for a while, but I hope all of them are in good health and enjoying the weather. And I appreciate you honoring the veteran. And I was going to get some brochure from this lady about smoking. See, I started smoking 76 years ago. And I thought maybe I'd get some information from her.
There you go, Bill. Anyone else wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? Please step forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joyce Adams. I'm with Cornerstone Villages. And we, our goal is to make transitional housing for the homeless. But what I'm here for tonight, I want to thank the city of Clearlake and all of you members for the efforts you've been putting forward lately to include the homeless in your plans for the future. We had a big symposium, some meeting in Lucerne, and we had a good attendance by our city officials there. And we had many discussions about the, what we're going to do to make a better place for homeless people, a better place for us, actually, for everybody. And I want to thank you all. And I also want to say that I'm here to help whatever you want to do. I'm a big time volunteer. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Hi, Councilmembers.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Gina Arch. And hi, Nick. Hi, Joyce. Hi, everybody. Hi, Sally. Anyway, we were here a couple of weeks ago, or last week, or two weeks ago, I'm not sure. But anyway, we had proposed something to you, and we wanted to know if you guys thought about it. Did anybody think about our proposal? I should look at you, actually, huh? Because you're the money man. You know, we had, we asked if you guys would help us, because we're trying to raise money for animal control. And we're going to have this event, if you can remember. Guys, can you? And we want to know if you guys?
And we can't respond during public comment.
Oh, you can't? Okay. Well.
Or at least we can't discuss, but you're talking about the event at the Moose Lodge?
Oh, you remember? Okay. As long as you remember. Okay. And, you know, we hope that you guys keep it in your head, because, you know, we really appreciate it, because it's coming up, and we're going to have a big event.
Rita, there are some folks here tonight that may not have heard what your last presentation. If you'd like to remind them of what's happening.
Oh, all right. Well, July 8th, we're going to have an event to raise money for animal control, because we've got a wonderful officer now, a wonderful, wonderful yellow lady. And she's going to do a lot of changes, and we're going to help her. You know, we're going to, we're going to try to raise from eight to $10,000, and we'd like the city to match it. So that way, we can help with the spain and neutering. And we're going to do a lot of things to help her, a lot of things, not just that. We're going to get volunteers, so she can have foster homes. And we want to work with the city. And I really mean that, you guys, okay? Because, you know, sometimes I don't agree with everything you guys do, but I do now. I promise. Okay? Don't you guys laugh? Okay? And like I said, we're here to help with the city, because, you know, we see a whole lot of change, and a lot of wonderful changes to our city, and we really need all this. Because I know that we can be just as good as Lakeport with their animal control. And this girl, Lily, is working with her heart, and she really, she really cares about the animals, and she cares about the citizens that are here. And I know that you guys can help us. So, you know, just think about it, okay? Thank you.
Do you have any news? No, we don't.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I know that the council can't respond, but staff can.
Hey, staff.
And he's not the money man. I am.
Oh, wow. What did you?
So the answer to your question is, in next year's budget, we have budgeted a match of $10,000.
Oh, thank you. You're such a honey. Thank you.
The second thing that I wanted to tell you is that we have also budgeted a second animal control officer.
Oh, thank you very much. And I wanted to tell you something, too. My landlord has given me two acres, okay, that we can use. It's got, it has power, it has electricity, and it's got a sewer, and it's got a septic tank, that we could use if you guys find that the place that you guys have is not suitable. And this is right on the highway, which it'd be wonderful, because if people want to, you know, adopt an animal, and they see animal control there, and they say, "That's a great place."
We're working on it, Rita, and I have to tell you, we're out of time.
Okay.
We do appreciate you coming up and making your presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You're a wonderful man. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at public comment? This is your chance. Seeing none, we're going to close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Folsom, any changes to the consent agenda?
No changes. No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any councilmember wishing to pull an item or discuss an item on the consent's agenda? Seeing none, any member of the public wishing to have an item pulled from tonight's consent agenda? Please step forward and identify which item. Seeing none, I'll bring that back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve said agenda as is.
A second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Now, moving on to our public hearing for tonight. I'd like to open the public hearing, and we will start with item seven. A public hearing to hear and act upon an abatement order appealed. Hearing reference: real property located at 15628 37th Avenue, Clearlake, California 95422. In accordance with CMC Section 18-9.110, 18-9.120, and 18-9.130, and 18-10 in its entirety. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, at this point, introduce our important supervisor, Lee Lambert.
And I'm actually going to turn it over to Steve Fellow, who's the officer on all this. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Okay, the purpose of each hearing. Consider and act upon any and all appealed to purpose of abatement order. On consideration of the evidence and testimony, council may grant the appeal and adopt a resolution to allow cultivation of marijuana, or deny the appeal and adopt a resolution of holding the abatement order for cultivation of marijuana, and direct the owner to abate the public nuisance. All legal and required documents were sent via U.S. standard and certified mail, as well as posted on the property. The property owner and/or responsible person filed an appeal in a timely manner. Attached to each staff report are the proposed resolutions confirming or denying said appeal. Staff recommend that council deny each said appeal. Should the council or the appellant wish to address me, the sitting officer, I am able and willing to respond to all Agenda item number seven, Resolution 217-26. Property address 15628 37th Avenue. Owner, Paula Lopez DeRaza. Appellant is Rolando Mordado and Eduardo Alejandra. The violations are illegal cultivation without a permit, illegal outdoor cultivation in excess of six plants, and illegal cultivation on vacant lot or parcels. I was the sitting officer. Thank you, sir. Here's a picture on April 25th, 2017. And here is a current picture from May 23rd. And that's it. Thank you, sir. Is the appellant or property owner in the, in the audience? Who would please come forward? Do you have any presentation to make?
No, he's not.
Good evening.
I'm Adrian. I'm translating for, do you want to move this?
I'm sorry. What's your name, sir?
Adrian.
Adrian? And you're translating for?
Remedy. Which is the, the, the.
Oh, it's right.
Speaking of the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Adrian, and I'm a, I'm a, I'm translating for Remedy. And he basically, what he's doing, he's wanting to, he's wanted a, another couple weeks to be able to move everything off the lot.
Has he moved everything off the lot?
Not yet. He's due to work. He works out of the areas six days a week, so he hasn't had a lot of time to do it during the week. So he works during the week, and on the weekend, he has, you know, time to clean up and move the ball out for each one a little more time to be able to move everything out.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anything else you would like to share of this tonight?
Yeah. I don't, he's not in all that ease, and I'm ready to bring the ball in.
Okay, so if you just stay there for a minute. Any council member have a question? Any appellant? No questions, thank you, sir. You have a question?
I do.
Okay, I apologize. Councilmember Bennett does have a question for you.
On the 8th of this month, um, he repressed an notice of appeal, uh, so that was, uh, two weeks ago, this last Monday. So he didn't have time between now and then to, uh, have removed those?
What he admitted to me was that he has some kind of eye problem, so he could be out in the sun too long, too late, so he, you know, he has to work, like he's trying to, have to work better, to understand, uh, he has too much to work, and he alone cannot do all the work, and so, and he doesn't have the ability to hire anybody else. He has thought, you know, it's not a law, so, yeah, he's, yeah, he hasn't been able to because he died, because, uh, he said that, uh, it's gonna be so many people, but he has somebody else on the line, so he has to hire somebody else.
Okay, just a second. Any other questions? Councilmember Harris has a question.
Did, did he alone plant all of those plants?
Yeah, he said he alone.
And if he, uh, is to remove those plants, we're assuming he would be destroying them, or would he be trying to relocate them to another location in the city of Clear Lake? Because we do have ordinance that limits the number of outdoor plants.
Yeah, he's aware of that.
And, and there's also a permit process that's required.
Yeah. Yeah, he's able to destroy those. No moment.
Thank you. Lieutenant Selly, is there any violation for transportation?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I don't believe you can transport them from the property, they, they would need to be properly destroyed on site.
How would they do?
Pull them out of the ground, chop them up, and dispose of them properly. Uh, go ahead, Lieutenant.
If I might, uh, they may want to talk with the code enforcement officers, and I believe that they can help facilitate.
There you go. So if he was able to, if he or you through translation can speak to the officer, might be able to get this remedied. Vice Mayor.
I have a question for him, Mr. Felder. I'm looking at the back of that picture, and it doesn't look like a wooden fence, it looks like a, a sort of tarp or whatever that, uh, black material is called. Uh, is there a fence violation on the violation that you submitted to them? Is that not a violation?
There's, there is a fence back there, they put the cloth like that, so you can't see through the fence, so I haven't cited them yet on that.
Okay. And Mr. Bennett has another question, sir.
Does this gentleman live on that property?
No, he doesn't.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Is there a member of the public who would like to give testimony or opinion on this, on this item? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'll just close it. No, just close it. Public testimony, I'm not closing the hearing. And since you were last to speak, it, there's a rebuttal. Um, I have a motion to close the public hearing. I have a motion to close.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, council, any other questions or comments?
Do we have any prior issue with the subject or the property?
No, sir.
Thank you.
And, and upon this, may I ask? And upon this, they still have, like, so many, like, ten days to remove these without a... And, and I mean, their fees would be deducted, I mean, we have a scale that they, that goes down, do they know about that?
That, that only applies to the property violations, not the marijuana ordinance.
Okay.
You guys would actually decide how many days they have to remove them.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? We have an action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal hearing, uh, or the appeal referencing real property located at 15628 37th Avenue, Clear Lake, California, 95422, in accordance with CMC sections as listed on the agenda.
I second, do we have a time? I'm sorry, it's a motion to adopt the resolution, I would adopt, there are two sample resolutions, so I don't want to just clear the motion that you're adopting the resolution.
I want to approve the resolution numbers, excuse me, thank you. Uh, approve resolution number 2017-26, denying the appeal, and referencing real property located at 15628 37th Avenue, Clear Lake, 95422, in accordance with CMC sections as listed.
Should we, I guess, by the time that these, that these to be remedied?
I believe, um, ten days is our norm, and I would say ten days.
That's what I was asking.
I'll second that, but.
All I was gonna add is, I gave them ten days, and then they also had, see, the original violation was on 425, I'm not sure if you know.
Yeah, I see. Then they appealed, so, so I would say give them, you know, the ten days to remove.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, it needs to be immediate, but within, within the code. So I have a motion. Councilmember Harris has offered a second. And a quick, we have a roll call.
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Firdon?
Aye. Thank you, Mayor Firdon. Moving on to item eight, public hearing to hear and act upon an abatement order appeal hearing, referencing real property located at 16288 21st Avenue, Clear Lake, California, 95422, in accordance with Clear Lake Municipal Code Sections 18-9.110, 18-9.120, 18-9.130, and 18-10 in its entirety.
Folsom, on to, uh, the officer.
Okay, so the address is 16288 21st Avenue, the owner is Maria Elena Pineruvo, the appellant is Juan Marcos Mendoza. The violations are illegal cultivation without a permit, illegal outdoor cultivation in excess of six plants, illegal outdoor cultivation not enclosed by solid wood fencing. Here's a picture from 328, 2017. I couldn't get a current picture, this is from 523, there was someone home, the door was open, the first picture I took of it was an officer.
Yeah, it was just out of curiosity, all three of, um, 21st Avenue, are they all adjacent?
Uh, two of them are, and then the other one's up the road, part of it.
All right. Is the appellant or property owner present in the chamber tonight? I don't see anyone responding. Is any member of the public wanting to address or offer testimony on this item for us tonight?
Can I add one more thing? Um, the gentleman that was just up here, Adrian, he actually came in and said he was in contact with this gentleman, and he said that the marijuana was gone now.
Sir, did you, I saw you raise your hand, would you like to offer testimony on this particular subject?
Yeah, uh, basically, I just own, these are acquaintance, I work, uh, in the majors, uh, one of the valley, and, uh, they, uh, he actually came in with me earlier to, what he wanted to do is come and say, you know, he has cleaned everything out, the property is clean, and, you know, if he had a little, say, a problem.
So he'd like to rescind his appeal?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Right.
Yes, any other member of the public wishing to discuss or talk or give testimony on this item? Seeing none, close the public comment portion. Bring it back, or I have to go, a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
Salute. Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Bennett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any questions of council members? Do I have an action?
Offer the motion to, uh, offer a resolution, uh, 2017-27, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, denying the appeal of an abatement order at, uh, real property located at 1628 21st Avenue, in accordance with section, uh, 18-9.110, or as on the agenda, uh, in its entirety, out of the Clear Lake Municipal Code.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We have a roll call.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Firdon?
Aye. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, night, number nine, public hearing to hear and act upon an abatement order appeal hearing, referencing real property located at 16298 21st Avenue, Clear Lake, California, 95422, in accordance with Clear Lake Municipal Code Sections 18-9.11, 18-9.12, 18-9.130, and 18-1.0 in its entirety.
Mr. Felder.
The owner is Paula Lopez Padraza, the appellant is Alfonso Geralda. The violations are illegal cultivation without a permit, illegal outdoor cultivation in excess of six plants, illegal outdoor cultivation not enclosed by solid wood fencing. I was the sitting officer. This is on the side of the house, this is a hoop house, uh, goes pretty much the whole width of the, the whole length of the single wide mobile, about 50 feet.
So what we're looking at is, is like the roof of a hoop house structure?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then again, this is the picture on May 23rd, the door was open, so I didn't get a good picture.
So explain, state how.
This is the, this is the mobile home, the single wide, the mobile, or the hoop house is on the right-hand side of this. I had gotten a picture, um, from the other side when I was with Officer Detective Cook, so when I was by myself, I didn't get too close.
Thank you, sir.
So is this inside a hoop house? It's inside a, a hoop house?
The hoop house, the hoop house is on the right-hand side, right behind that fence, and the marijuana is inside. We could smell it, too, me and Officer, or Detective Cook.
There's some state laws on the inside row?
Yeah. Yeah, but I think the inside row is, is six plants or less, and, uh, sure, it's a residential greenhouse-type secure facility, hoop house would not call.
Any additional information, officer?
No, sir.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I have a quick question. Uh, please, um, can you go back on the pictures or book, if you could, please? Okay, that, that, that's it, correct? Would you say that there's more than six? Because I don't see any marijuana, yes, you smell it, yes, I, I, I believe you that there's marijuana on the premises, but if they just took down the hoop house and got themselves a permit, since we can get a permit, so I'm just wondering, is there more than six? Do we have proof of more than six?
I cannot verify that, no, sir.
Because I...
A hoop house is also a violation of code.
But I'm just wondering, uh, since it says there's an excess of marijuana on the violation of six plants, how do, do we have proof that there's more than six plants?
With my experience, I've never seen a hoop house this big with only six plants.
Okay.
Usually, it's always full. The council has the ability to pass, to deny the appeal on the, on the known violations if, if for some reason there's concern as to that particular violation, the number of plants.
Any other questions? Staff?
Is there any priors on this property?
I have pictures from last year, I don't have them with me, but there was hoop houses there last year, and it was a big one on both sides, and I was actually trying to get PD to go out there with me, because it was a, we figured it was a commercial grow, but we just didn't have time to get to it.
And, sir, this time I would like to open it up for a presentation by the appellant or property owner. Are they present tonight?
No, he's not present.
Good evening, sir, if you'd just step up to the microphone, introduce yourself and let us know what you have to say.
I'm Adrian, I'm just here with the, the other tenant, and, uh, I actually originally came here, I'm looking after him, uh, and he, he wasn't able to come today, and he did mention that he has removed the house, and removed, uh, any plant on the property.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony. Anyone else wishing to discuss or offer testimony on this item, please step forward. I have a motion to close.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any additional comments or questions? Do we have an action?
I will say that the hoop house is definitely illegal, um, obviously, there's, um, but I can't go with the violation of more than six plants when there's no evidence given to me that there are, other than the large quantity, so I, um, I think we need to go further than that, yes, it looks like it, but just because it looks like it, I, I, I just don't have enough evidence in front of me. Uh, the rest of the violations are obviously violations.
I believe we were just presented with that, that's what the gentleman stood up here and said.
Well, he said it's gone, but...
Okay, Councilmember Bennett?
I think we can, uh, go with the evidence, uh, based on the experience for a code enforcement officer, the strong over of the marijuana, uh, the hoop house itself is evidence of an illegal grow, and, uh, the prior year that they had two hoop houses there, I think if it walked like enough and so on and so forth.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Harris, did you have a phone? Councilmember Overton?
Hi, David. Okay, let's just say we take marijuana one off, I mean, we can amend this, is that correct? Or does it have to be presented as?
No, you can amend the resolution, and you would say the remaining two violations, if you like.
So what would be the, the one that we need to remove from marijuana? Is this, this all just marijuana, this is for the hoop house, too?
It's just for the marijuana. Oh, was the only side just for the excess of six plants? No, no, there was...
There was three.
There was three.
Was there any permit pulled for any marijuana there?
No, sir. So the illegal cultivation not a permit?
Would you need further discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question for council. Uh, I just don't feel comfortable saying that I have proof and evidence of excess of six plants, that without a permit, if you guys are telling me that it's in there, obviously, yeah, you could tell that it's in there, but proof of more than six, I, I, I need more proof than just a picture of a hoop house and, uh, a smell. And so I feel, I, what do, what, I want to say I, uh, agree to deny the appeal based on, uh, the illegal enclosure and no permit, but I don't agree with the more than six plants without being able to see and recognize that obviously there's, there's more than six plants. Even though I believe you, I don't have the evidence to say that I can say without a doubt that there's more than six. What, what, what would be my...
Mr. Jones? For this purpose for this hearing, are we looking at preponderance or beyond reasonable doubt?
It's a preponderance standard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
I would, uh, make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-28, denying the appeal, uh, referencing real property located at 16298 21st Avenue in Clear Lake, in accordance with CMC Sections 18-9.110, 18-9.120, 18-9.130, and 18-10 in its entirety.
I have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Overton. May I roll call, please?
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Firdon?
Aye. Switching, moving on to item number 10, public hearing to hear and act upon abatement order appeal hearing, referencing real property located at 16036 43rd Avenue, Clear Lake, California, 95422, in accordance with Clear Lake Municipal Code Sections 18-9.110, 18-9.120, 18-9.130, and 18-10 in its entirety.
Mr. Felder?
The owner of this property is Felix Vienostino Ocho, and the appellant is the same. Violations are illegal cultivation without a permit, illegal outdoor cultivation in excess of six plants, illegal outdoor cultivation not enclosed by solid wood fencing. I was the sitting officer. This is a greenhouse, and it's full. And this is the follow-up on 523. I believe this is the one. Actually, the marijuana is gone on this one, they have, they have taken all the buds off. It's kind of hard to see in this picture, but he owns, both these cases are right next to each other, and one has plants and one doesn't.
Both of which cases, Officer?
The ones that were, the next one after this one.
Okay. So for this item, Number Ten, that is the greenhouse structure you're seeing. You can see plants underneath the plastic area, but you say that they've been removed now?
Yes, sir. The buds have been, the buds have been done.
Okay, the whole plant or just...
Not the whole plant, just it's been trimmed off all the marijuana. The plants are still there in the pods.
All right, thank you. And that's as of the twenty-third?
Yes.
Twenty-third of May. Any questions, Officer? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I was just curious. I couldn't really tell from the mess. Is that the one that's right behind the KEC and the college?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, Officer? The property owner or the appellant are present tonight. Anyone wishing to offer testimony? Seeing none, is there a member of the public who would like to offer testimony in this hearing? Very well. I'd like to close the public hearing.
Motion? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any additional questions, the staff? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve Resolution 2017-27, denying the appeal, and the appeal hearing referencing real property located at 16036 Fourteenth Avenue, City of Clear Lake, California 95422, in accordance with CMC Sections eighteen, or eighteen-nine point one-one-zero, eighteen-nine point one-two-zero, eighteen-nine point one-three-zero, and eighteen-ten in its entirety.
I just want to make an amendment. Did we mean dash two-nine instead of dash two-seven? Just to make sure that we're on the record for the right of resolution.
And it's two-nine.
I have a motion of zero-one-seven, two-nine. Good man, clerk? Is that correct?
The correct resolution number is two-one-seven, dash, two-nine.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Motion and a second by Councilwoman Overton. All those, or they have a roll to call vote?
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perna?
Aye. Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry to ask a question after the fact. I know that, I believe that hoop house was there last year as well, is that correct, Mr. Felder?
I believe so, yes.
Do you know if there are plans from the property owner to take that down, so that maybe we don't have to see that again next year?
I'll be working with them to make sure that happens.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Moving on to Item Eleven, is that correct? Public hearing to hear and act upon abatement order appeal hearing, reference real property located at 16389 Twenty-first Avenue in Clear Lake, California 95422, in accordance with Clear Lake Municipal Code Sections one-eight-nine point one-one-zero, one-eight-nine point one-two-zero, one-eight-nine point one-three-zero, and one-eight-one-zero in its entirety. Officer?
The owner of this property is Felix Vienostino. The appellant is Guadalupe Perez. The violations are illegal cultivation without a permit, illegal outdoor cultivation in excess of six plants, illegal outdoor cultivation enclosed by solid wood fencing, and illegal cultivation on a vacant lot or parcel. I was the siding officer. Here's a picture of the hoop house. This is a picture on May twenty-third. For some reason, I didn't get a picture over to my supervisor, but I do have a better picture with the plants inside to show that there is more than six.
Please.
So I can pass them.
You're on those, Lieutenant. Detective, you get this, show this to the app. Thank you, sir. I know you're not a bailiff, but...
It's okay.
You look really good.
I'm presenting myself on behalf of Guadalupe Perez. My name is David Perez, I'm a son, and I just wanted to let you guys know that I understand that I made a violation. We actually, I actually do have a permit for ninety-nine plants. I don't know if it works here, but I have a permit.
Just so you can see your face, could you remove the mask for me? Sure, thank you. Sorry about that.
No, yeah, I actually have a permit here. I don't think it works here, but you know, it's ninety-nine plants, authorization to transport or to grow at a single location. You know, I mean, I'm willing to, you know, comply with whatever you guys gotta do, you know, whatever. If you guys need me to take them down, take them down. I need some days to take out everything, you know, take out all the hoop, whatever you guys call it. That's it, pretty much.
Okay, you mentioned something I didn't quite catch. You said you had authorization to grow ninety-nine plants.
That's correct.
And where did that authorization come from?
I'm paying out a non-profit organization that's a collective. I'm paying a hundred dollars for a permit. It's going to be a permit via email, and I printed it out, and I have it here with me, actually.
Could you get your money back?
Yeah, I can.
I hope so.
No, I can't.
Because they, within the city limits, we don't have an ordinance that allows that. And you would, of course, need to come here. That's why we're here tonight.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else you'd like to offer in testimony?
That's it. I mean, I know, if it doesn't work, I didn't know, you know, I bought it, it's only worth, but you know, and it doesn't, but you know, I just want to make it clear, you know, I ain't trying to do this like balls, I'm trying to do it by the book however I can, you know.
I appreciate that. The photos that were shown to you, are those of that property?
Correct.
That is...
Same one.
Let me see a copy of the...
Do you have a copy of the permit with you, if you change that line?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Just give us a second to review that.
Based on my review, it didn't look like it was from a state agency or a governmental agency. I hear it's from a private nonprofit organization.
For the record, the heading reads Herbal Hope Patients Group, a private nonprofit collective, entitled Authorization to Abate Medicine. It's with their own corporate seal.
Where?
Again, second, second page, the heading reads Herbal Hope Patients Group, private nonprofit collective. This is a notice to law enforcement identifying that this site contains cannabis, per on the reports, laws of the state of California. One more coming, Lieutenant. Vice Mayor, just, you're looking at a map.
Yeah, Google map.
Sir, do you have any other testimony to offer tonight?
Officer, that is all.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
We have the date.
Hold on, please.
I will say that the paperwork that you have that says possibly that you can transport, that, that's probably, I'm going to look at our interim chief, Sally, to, I would suspect that if you plan on transporting, that that paperwork's not going to save you.
No, no, no. I understand that one.
All right.
Vice Mayor, that is absolutely correct. You need a state license for that.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Harris?
And I think, I think we're going to mention again about the idea that if the code enforcement were to provide assistance with the, the removal, that's where we're going to head anyway, so, you know, if it's deemed to be removed, so it might be a resource for you to get with the code enforcement on that. They might have the resources to assist.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other individuals here tonight wishing to offer testimony on this item? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back, close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, and seconded by Councilwoman Overton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vice Mayor?
I wanted to commend staff, wow, for those neighbors that live in that area near Twenty-first Avenue, and for you to be clearing that up, I really appreciate it, so thank you so much.
Like to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-31, denying the appeal... To, excuse me, denying the appeal here in referencing real property located at sixteen three eight nine Twenty-first Avenue of Clear Lake, California 95422, in accordance with CMC Sections eighteen-nine point one-one-zero, eighteen-nine point one-two-zero, eighteen-nine point one-three-zero, eighteen-ten in its entirety.
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Overton. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Overton? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perna?
Aye. Moving on to Item Twelve. Public hearing to hear and act upon abatement order appeal hearing, reference real property located at 16046 Fourteenth Avenue in Clear Lake, California 95422, in accordance with Clinic Municipal Code Sections one-eight-nine point one-one-zero, one-eight-nine point one-two-zero, one-eight-nine point one-three-zero, and one-eight-one-zero in its entirety. Mr. Felder?
The owner of this property is Felix Vienostino Ochoa, and the appellant is the same name. Violations are illegal cultivation without a permit, illegal outdoor cultivation in excess of six plants, illegal cultivation on a vacant lot or parcel. I was the siding officer. There's a picture on April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. And here's a picture on May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen.
Any additional information, testimony, or photograph? Officer?
This is a, this is a hoop house, this is adjacent to the other property that we did on, at 16036 Fourteenth. It's another hoop house, approximately twenty-five by seventy-five, and it's full of marijuana. And it was still there when I went and did the follow-up.
What name did you follow up?
On May twenty-third.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to add real quick, so those are two separate properties, two hoop houses and one on each property, and this one is the one with the camber shell?
No, sir. There's no camber shell that I can see, but there is, there are two separate parcels.
Okay. No residents on the property?
I didn't see any, no.
Thank you. Any other questions, Officer? As well as the appellant or property owner present, anyone wishing to speak on this matter or offer testimony, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back. A motion to close?
Motion to close.
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Bennett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Very well. Any comments or questions, the staff? Vice Mayor?
I want a quick comment I forgot to make. When I looked at my agenda last week after receiving it, thank you so much for bringing these early this year. I know in the past years, we've typically gotten these a little later, and I really appreciate, this feels very proactive, so thank you again for that, too.
Councilmember Harris?
Just out of curiosity regarding, as I understand, there are abatement orders for the marijuana itself, or that's what we're discussing, but on some of these, obviously, the, just the structures themselves are in extreme blight, so I just want to make sure that we're addressing that as well, even if the marijuana is dealt with, that we're addressing these, these obviously unpermitted structures.
Yes, sir. When I go out to do my follow-up, that's what I look forward to seeing, the hoop houses are gone with the marijuana, and if not, I start a regular property case.
And are we also following the same sort of procedures with the fences that are in violation of height, or in right up to the city streets?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Overton?
Okay, so, did I, did I hear you right, that you said that once the marijuana issue's done, you, if they don't remove the structures, you're going to cite them for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think we had this discussion before, that we wanted it all done at the same time, so are they not being cited for the hoop buildings and the fences and stuff? When you go out there, they should be cited for everything.
In my experience, when they take the marijuana, they usually take the parcels.
I know, but I think as council, we decided that we wanted them cited all at the same time, so there wasn't the back and forth, like we had last year with that harassment. So, because the people were feeling they were being harassed. So I think that's a discussion that maybe you actually have.
Vice Mayor?
I think that's something that we may be discussing while reviewing the code enforcement handbook.
Any other comments? Do I have an action?
I have a motion for you. Motion to approve Resolution 2017-30, denying the appeal, hearing referencing real property located at sixteen zero four six Fourteenth Avenue, Clear Lake, California 95422, in accordance with CMC Sections eighteen-nine point one-one-zero, eighteen-nine point one-two-zero, eighteen-nine point one-three-zero, eighteen-ten in its entirety.
I have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Overton. May I roll call vote?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton? Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perna?
Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to Item Thirteen, which is a continuation of a public hearing to confirm assessments for administrative penalties for failure to abate public nuisance, in accordance with Clear Lake Municipal Code Sections one-five, one-nine, one-zero, one-point-six, one-zero, one-point-seven, one-zero, one-point-nine, one-zero, one-point-one-two, one-zero, two-point-two-B, one-zero-point, dash, two-point-four, one-zero, dash, two-point-five, one-zero, two-point-six, one-zero, two-point-seven, one-zero, two-point-eight, one-zero, three-point-one, one-zero, three-point-three, one-zero, five, and one-zero, five-point-six. Mr. Felder, are you reporting on this?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Okay, the purpose of the hearing. Consider and act upon any, any and all protests of proposed assessments for recovery of the cost of administrative penalties for failure to abate public nuisance. Upon consideration of the evidence and testimony, council may grant the protest and revise the resolution to remove the assessments, or deny the protest and confirm the assessments as proposed, or modify, reduce the amount of assessments, and revise the resolution to reflect the modified assessments. Property owners were given notice of the violations and adequate time to voluntarily correct the violations. Property owners failed to abate public nuisance on the said property within the prescribed time. Property owners were given notice of their right to appeal to imposition of administrative penalties. Property owners failed to submit and write a notice of appeal of administrative penalties within the prescribed time allowed. Attached to this staff report is the proposed resolutions confirming assessments, statement of expenses for the proposed assessments, and supportive evidence. Staff recommend that council confirm all assessments as proposed. Property number 1, 3923 Oak Avenue. The owner is Thomas Gallagher. Administrative penalty assessment $5,000. Defective, deteriorated, unsightly, or in disrepair any building, wall, fence, driveway, etc. Conditions recognized involve construing a public nuisance and/or visual blight, overgrown vegetation and/or weeds, etc., general dilapidation or improper maintenance. Violation of any provision of the municipal code. Faulty weather protection, exterior walls, roof, foundation, floors, windows, doors, etc. I was the side opposite. This was a picture taken in August 19, August 19, 2016. This is the rookie. You can see there's some missing shingles. This is some follow-up pictures on April 25th. Nothing has changed. Still the high weeds. These are current pictures. Weeds are even higher.
That's it?
Thank you, sir. Can I speak for myself? Just a second, sir. Any questions to staff this time? Very good. Yes, sir. Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Sorry, I was late on that. This is one that's coming back to us, that we had tabled to come back. This is correct, right?
This is the one, he was, it was on the agenda, but he was out of state, so he requested another.
Gotcha. I was trying to figure out, then, wasn't there a resolution that was, but no. Thank you.
Yes, this is on the agenda. This could be a third time.
And actually, I wanna add, the original case was started by Lee Lambert in September 30th, 2014. And then I took over, I think my initial one was in August of 2016. He had gotten multiple extensions. He came in the office multiple times. So this is something that's been going on for a while.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Anyone wishing to offer testimony? Are you the property owner?
Yes, sir.
Please. If you would, just identify yourself.
My name is Tom Keldiker. And first, I apologize if I'm less than perfectly articulate. I just drove straight through from Arizona, except for a four-hour nap last night. So if I'm a little bit druggie, I apologize. And it took a lot longer to get here. I ran into a lot of detours and.
Well, we appreciate you being here tonight, sir. Thank you.
I just wanna make a good faith effort to be here. And I'm sorry, I had planned to be here like a couple weeks before to clean things up. Arizona thinks I was doing detainee. I was slowed down by the weather. Yesterday was 115 degrees. And when you start getting dizzy, you kinda gotta slow down. And I had to do some safety issues on some buildings before I came out here. And I also wanna clean them up there, so I can have these sort of problems out there. Second thing is, is in the past, I made a good faith effort to clean it up. That's based on the 2014 memo. I was under the impression that I had done most of it. There was something about a fence. I repaired the fence. It was sabotaged, but I fixed that up. I have made ongoing efforts to mow, so in summer 2015, summer 2016, I guess the weeds are, I haven't been out there. I was out there in February, and I didn't stay notice or anything like that hanging on the door. The only thing I noticed was a neighbor to the right of me had dumped some tree limbs that were exact same size off of this tree and so forth. And...
So if I can just ask you a couple of questions. This is your property in the picture?
Yes, that's my property.
Okay. And do you live there, or is?
Everybody does. It's vacant.
Okay.
So essentially, I boarded it up, you know, for safety issues, put locks on, gate locks, and all that sort of thing. My intent is to clean it up. My intent is to comply. The notice of fall 8, 2016, I just got that just now. I've had trouble getting my mail. And so, you know, I just briefly reviewed it while you were having your meeting, but I like take some time to review it and so forth, and whatever rights I might have. And I would ask for some time to clean it up, and so I can comply with it. So that's the kind of request I have. And I've made, you know, good faith efforts in the past, so I say I've gotta repaint it. I did paint it dent to make it look better. And it's gonna take me a few days to work on it. I packed all my, most of my tools with me, so they're here. They're here.
Good.
I brought the weed whacker. Otherwise, I'll have to go up to Oregon and get the big weed mower.
Well, we have a couple other questions for you. Vice Mayor?
I'm just curious for Mr. Felder. Have there been any issues of squatters in the property or inside the property?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Harris?
It's locked, it's double locked up and so forth.
This is directed at Lee. This was stemming back from 2014. He had noted that some effort was made, some good faith effort was made. And I'm just curious as to what was the detail of the effort that was made, and what kind of changes would we see from 2014 to 2017?
Okay, so going over the case from 2014. Could I shoot part of it? Let them just descend this time. Okay, so he was cited in September 30th of 2014. Received a complaint regarding the current condition of the property. The property was currently a nuisance, eyesore, and safety hazard around the community. He was advised to make repairs to existing dwelling structure, including but not limited to replace, repairing or replacing broken windows, repairing front deck, replacing dry rock, and painting exteriors from the structure. And they needed to obtain building permits to do so. Remove all trash and debris from the site. Also required that we receive proof of the disposal. That's what we required back in 2014. Several times, because he did say he was in and out of state. I think he did cut the weeds, and he painted the entire building and boarded the windows. The history of this structure is, I believe it's been vacant ever since I started here in '06. And it's pretty much been in the same condition and getting worse since then. I don't know if he's been the owner the whole time.
Was a permit obtained for any of the work that was done?
Negative.
And this question would be to you. I don't know, you're out of state, it sounds like to me. One of the things that you need to consider about the situation, and what we have to consider now, especially over the last two summers, is that that heavy weed growth that you have there around that property, and it seems like it's a reoccurring, if you're out of state, can dramatically affect the survivability of your surrounding neighbors. So some of these people may be living in those structures with their families, and if a fire, like we've experienced in the last two summers, were to come our way, your property and the condition it's in can be the catalyst to them losing their homes.
I, I understand that. A couple of things. I did have two or three prior permits. Is that Bill, the prior inspector, the older gentleman, came in and checked I was doing some foundation work and other things. So I had repair permits to do that before. The, I lived there off and on, I think in 2003 or '04, when I owned it. I don't remember the exact dates. I lived there off and on. I did painting. I did repair work. I did fence as required. And then someone cut my lock, and so I put a new lock on it. Neighbor did. I've done weed mowing several times. Granted, this is a lot higher. I did remove trash. I don't remember where I put my dump receipts, but I went to the dump and also the weeds and stuff. I went to the, up the hill above the dump.
Quackenbush.
The what?
Quackenbush.
Quackenbush?
Quackenbush, yeah. And I made several trips there. I cleaned up stuff that other people dumped on it. The deck I did repair work on. I put the, covered the back bottom in the deck, I believe, so, what do you call that? Skirting? Skirted the mower home for the front. And I know I did other things, but just that's what cursed me off the top of my head.
All right, thank you.
And to add on to your comments, Phil, I have had multiple calls from the neighbors worried about the weeds being a fire hazard.
Thank you very much. That's my biggest concern, you know, especially with the given situation. We've been.
If I take care of the weeds this week, would that help? I bought my weed whacker with me. String chumber.
I see a lot of work, actually, that.
I do, too.
Would be done. But what are you, what are you prepared to do? You're here asking that we?
I would like to get some sort of time extended. Look, I just got this letter today of the 8/6, 8/2016.
With all due respect, sir, we've been working on this for a couple of years.
Okay. So from 2014, I thought my impression was is that I was done with it, those problems then.
Okay.
I just, there was 20, I'm sorry, there was a 2016, 8/2016 notice, and I did not get that. I just got that just now. So I just looked at that. I would like to get a chance to comply with that, or do whatever. The only issue I have, is there anything in your ordinance that says I can't have boarded windows? For a safety issue and kids and broken windows and so forth?
Yeah, there is a building can't remain in a state of disrepair.
So you can't have it boarded up?
No. Not for extended period of time, no.
So I put a new window in, and then some kid breaks it, and I gotta keep doing that?
I would suggest, I mean, I would, my advice would be to rent it out. Can I say, I was gonna say you had something to add? Just to go back to his understanding, he had inspections before, and referencing Inspector Bill Benavich. Bill Benavich hasn't worked for the city since 2005. So any inspections were prior to that. Additionally, I opened the case in September 2014. I had no contact with Tom until December 9th of 2014, when he advised me, he contacted me, and he advised me he was gonna get permitted and start the work. I gave an extension till January 19th of 2015. He did come in that day, January 15th of 2015, and granted him another extension till February 18th of 2015. After that, I heard nothing from him, and then Officer Felder took over the case.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Overton?
Okay, so what I see here is every two, three years you come up?
No, I do end up every, in the last three years I've been up there, or then I've been up there every year, a couple times a year.
So, okay, so this is, this is one of the problems that we have in our community is you're not living in it. You're not doing any of it, and you have to mow the weeds at least every couple of weeks here. So there's nobody maintaining the property. When I look at this here, it just looks like a bunch of boards all over the house. Like somebody just stuck a, you know, boards up. It's not very appealing. It doesn't even look like a home. It looks more like a shed, or shack that's just been kinda stepped up there. As a homeowner and a responsible homeowner in our community, I mean, we all would expect it to be maintained on a further basis, not, you know, once a year. Even once a year's not, just not enough. It sounds to me like they've been working with you for many years on this, and have given you many chances to do something. And if you have the property, what was your plan for it? Are you planning to rent it out, to live in it, to, what was your plan for the property?
Possibly one or the other, when I get time after.
Is there more work inside that needs done, is why you can't occupy it?
I.
Is that the problem?
I don't know. I, I haven't been inside for a little bit. I've been working on the outside.
Vice Mayor?
Just would like to make a suggestion. As a landlord myself, I hire a monthly service to take care of the weeds, the landscaping, and making sure that there's no garbage. If you're gonna be that far away, traveling that distance to come three, four times a year to make sure that the weeds are down, at one point they stop growing. But in, during the springtime, it definitely grows, especially when we get good rains like we get this year. So I would suggest that if you, we seem to be reoccurringly having to contact you for similar things. Look for a service to take care of your property, 'cause vacancy and you being the way is not helping us, or the neighbors in the area. So please look into that.
You live in Arizona?
I wintered in Arizona. My home base is Santa Cruz County, but I haven't been there much. I've been working and working in Arizona.
You have property in Santa Cruz?
Yes. There are Santa Cruz Mountains.
I'm not here to lecture you. You're too old for that, and I'm too old to lecture anybody. But our city is moving forward. We passed measure D not long ago to a one-cent sales tax that will improve our roads. The roads in the avenues, they're roads. I live up there. I was raised under their roads. I don't mind their road. But we're gonna grade those roads up there. It's gonna increase our property taxes. If that structure was next to you in the Santa Cruz Mountains, I'll wager you at least to die that you'd go telling. You are taking down property values of your neighbors, of our community. This needs to be taken care of.
Okay.
That is a property.
I just wanted to give a chance to do that.
And you, as a property owner, recognize your responsibility on that. It's groomed individuals. We know that. That's our responsibility. And you know that. I know you do. You're an educated man. I can tell. I think no more needs to be said on that. You need to do something with that property. Either kind of, I belong to a hunting club that has a shack out there that looks better than that. And we only occupy it during hunting season in August and Taylor October. You need to do something about it. You're endangering your neighbors. It's taking down property values. And you know that.
Can I work on it for two weeks and come back and report back?
Well, I think, depending on how the council goes.
Okay.
I think if there are certain, if there are certain fines imposed on you, if it is done within a certain amount of time, those fines are reduced considerably. Am I correct? So then it puts the onus on you.
Mr. Folsom, if you would, could you just explain to the process?
So I don't know the exact amounts, but it's basically, if it's done within 30 days, it drops the, for instance, the $5,000 penalty to $500. And then it goes on further and further out to at least six months. It increases, yeah.
And how did you arrive at $5,000?
There was multiple violations. I believe there was.
Multiple violations over a long period of time, sir?
I believe there was four violations, and I only cited them for two.
You mean the weeds and so forth, violations?
The weeds, the boarded up windows, the rent, the shell of the building itself. That's what we're hearing tonight.
Actually, there was nine violations.
The other thing that I'd like to point out, sir, Officer Lambert just explained that we do have a process by which these fines can be lowered dramatically. The purpose for that is that we won't have abated properties, or properties that need to be abated, that just.
or properties that need to be abated that just languish forever without any resolution. We wanna work with property owners, as Mr. Councilman Bennett has pointed out, because we wanna clean up our neighborhoods. So, if you're willing to do those things, what I'm saying is you can, you can have this reduced dramatically. If you're willing to work with the officers and get it cleaned up.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Folsom.
Do you happen to have any current assessments against the property for previous violations?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, here's, here's the main concern, and I think we all echo the same thought here, is that, you know, given the opportunity you have with the, working with code enforcement, if you were to put your money to better use, the money that you would have spent on paying the assessment could be put towards your property and improve the, the look of it and the concerns that we're talking about. So, absolutely, we would heavily encourage, instead of that money going towards an assessment, to go towards the property. And then you, you benefit from that.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you.
Educated gentleman. Like I say, I'm sorry that I'm a little bit, you know, taking a little bit of a...
You're tired. We get it.
The Mountain Dew started watering out.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions to be dealt with? There's none, sir. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Step forward. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None? Any other questions or comments? Are you ready to take action?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-33 to deny the protesting, confirm all the assessments on, for the total amount of $5,000 for administrative penalties for failure to obey public nuisances in accordance with CMC Sections 1-5, 1-9, 10-1.6, 10-1.7, 10-1.9, 10-1.12, 10-2.2B, 10-2.4, 10-2.5, 10-2.6, 10-2.7, 10-2.8, 10-3.1, 10-3.3, 10-5, and 10-5.6.
A motion is second by Councilman Overton. Call vote, please.
It's actually Resolution 2017-32. You stated 31, but it's 32, just for the...
I see 33.
I see 33 on my paperwork as well.
It's the next, that is for Elaine Goodrich. It's the next step report following.
All right. I will amend to Resolution Number 2017-32.
Have a corrected motion and a corrected second. Have a first or a call vote?
Councilmember? Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Savachi?
Aye.
Mayor Burden?
Ayes. Very well. Moving on to business. Item 14. Review and approve. Okay. That part, review and approval.
Excuse me, there's a, there's a second part to that, to that number.
I'm getting ahead.
I'm so sorry.
We were trying to figure out why there was two. We're just confused here.
They were both carried over.
All right. Thank you for clarification.
Are we going to...
Yeah, we're doing 33.
Just to clarify, the one we just did was on Oak.
Yes.
Thank you.
It actually helped quite a bit to understand it, because I was looking at the picture and I was very confused.
Where are we?
Yeah, it didn't match my visual memory of it.
So, moving on in continuation of this hearing. Confirm assessment in total amount of $5,000 for administrative penalties for failure to obey public nuisance in the courts with CMC, clearly municipal code sections, 1-5, 1-9, 1-0-1.6, 1-0-1.7, 1-0-1.9, 1-0-1.12, 1-0-2.2B, boy, 1-0-2.4, 1-0-2.5, 1-0-2.6, 1-0-2.7, 1-0-2.8, 1-0-3.1, 1-0-3.3, 1-0-5, 1-0-5.6. And Officer Felder, would you like to give the report?
Yeah, this is property number two at 3925 Eureka Avenue. The owner was Elaine Goodrich. Administrative penalty assessment, $5,000. Accumulation and or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, and automobile vehicles, et cetera. I'm curious to help, attentive to the senses of obstructive free use of enjoyment of property, condition recognizing law constituting a public nuisance and visual blight. Violation of any provision of the Clearly Municipal Code. I was the siding officer. Original pictures were taken on 5/9/2016. It said the truck and it was full of garbage. Some couches on the side of the house. These follow pictures were on April 25, 2017. There was a truck not as full of garbage. There's some garbage in the back. The current pictures were captured on May 23rd. Most of the garbage is gone. The truck is gone. And it cleans up in the front. The couches are gone. So, the gentleman was here last time and said that he was gonna get it cleaned up and he did. He's not here tonight. And I have not been in contact with him.
Is that Levi?
Yes, sir.
So, what action are you asking of us to make? Would violation still exist?
I asked you to remove the penalties and then I'm gonna start a new case on the roof 'cause I had a problem with that and I didn't put it in my, my first report.
Okay, so you're asking that we remove the penalties on this particular case?
Not necessarily remove the penalties. They haven't been assessed, so to not approve the resolution.
Not to approve the resolution. Okay, so we deny the resolution. But you say you're gonna move forward with the violation on the roof?
Yes, sir.
There seem to be a few other violations that are just off the top of my head. I hope you'll address those all at once.
Yes, sir.
Property owner? Thank you. Mr. Harris, do you have a comment? Do you have another question or...
I'm not sure whether it is exactly. We just, we're not gonna drop this off, are we, Jim?
So, no, no action would be taken?
That's just not...
Just not an appeal to the greater deny.
So, there's just not...
Well, we've heard the case. Officer's been contacted and has asked to remove or deny the, the item. Is that correct?
There's a...
No action to take?
We will be a resolution to remove the penalty. Just no action.
No action to take.
Not move that penalty forward.
Thank you. So, moving on to the next item? No action to take. So, that item is closed. So, moving on now to number 14. Review and approval of the City of Clearly Code Enforcement Division Policy and Procedures Manual. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll now introduce Mr. Lee Lambert, our Code Enforcement Supervisor.
Okay, so the adoption of the Code Enforcement Division Policy and Procedure Manual, Resolution Number 2017-34. Background, since the inception of the city, the Code Enforcement Division has operated with that document, policies and procedures. On January 26, 2017, the City Council formed a Code Enforcement Ad Hoc Committee for the purposes of reviewing the code enforcement process. Mayor Burden and Councilman Bennett were appointed to the committee, which also included city staff. Several meetings were spent reviewing the current state of the program and the challenges and opportunities available to the city after several years of code enforcement redundancy. Clearly, it had an abundance of enforcement opportunities. Division should concentrate on effectively directing those resources for maximum legal impact. The Code Enforcement Policy and Procedure Manual will assist stakeholders to align those resources. At the direction of the Ad Hoc Committee, staff was asked to create a Code Enforcement... Let me catch up. Code enforcement... Staff was asked to create a Code Enforcement Division Policy and Procedures Manual. Code enforcement staff met and reviewed samples from other jurisdictions to help determine the content of our manual. The code enforcement supervisor, with assistance of his entire division, wrote the policy and procedure manual, which is in front of you this evening. What it provides, clear statements about how the division operates, a more effective and fair application of municipal code. Here's a document that is intended to be communicated to the council, staff and public for transparency and better, and better understanding of the division and its operations. The mission statement, we work with our community to provide solution-oriented enforcement to promote and maintain clean, safe and prosperous conditions throughout the city. The purpose of code enforcement is to eliminate public nuisances and conditions that constitute blight or which are or could result in conditions which are harmful to the health, safety and or welfare of the public. To encourage, educate and promote the sound maintenance of property and enhance the livability, enjoyment, appearance and economic and environmental conditions of this community. The contents of the manual, the chapters relate to administration and personnel guidelines and policies, case process for property violations, case process for marijuana cultivation violations, case process for vehicle abatement, office and field operations, officer's safety and community outreach. Our recommendation is that the council adopt Resolution Number 2017-34, approving the Code Enforcement Division Policy and Procedures Manual.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And thank you to staff and everyone who worked on this. Truly appreciate you coming forward to us tonight. Does any council member have a comment or question to staff at this point? Seeing none, I would like to open up a public comment. Anyone wishing to, maybe to review the Code Enforcement Policy and Procedures and have a comment to make, would like to hear it. Stand forward. Not seeing one, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Overton?
So, on this here, when we say property manage, maintenance, and that's gonna include the buildings, but I know that before we talked about an inspector had to be, it can't be code enforcement on houses. Is it the same with commercial buildings? Because I thought had to be an inspector, a housing inspector. We had that issue before, so I'm curious if that was ever decided, if that was correct or not.
I don't know that I'm understanding your question.
Well, there was, there was times where that there was issues before and I just wanna make sure that when we do this, who's in charge here? There was issues before about our code enforcement tagging houses. And we were told that they, code enforcement couldn't tag houses by having to be in a housing inspector. But there's been some controversy of whether that's true or not. So, do we, did anybody ever, I mean, that was back like a year or so ago. Remember that, Lee, when there was some controversy about the code enforcement and, and this housing inspectors tagging? That the housing inspector had to go and do the tagging itself?
I remember several years ago it came up at one point and at the time Scott Spivey was tagged for structural reasonings. If it's not a structural reasoning, I believe code enforcement can handle for health and safety issues. I think that's, that's right.
Okay, all right. I think just wanted to clarify.
But it was a building code violation and our building inspector would be called to do that. Is that correct?
Correct, unless it falls under health and safety. Under 17920.3, there are some building violations that a code enforcement officer has the authority to cite.
Yes. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So, I had a few suggestions and, and mind you, these suggestions are not me saying this is what you should do in your job. I think you already do these things. But I think that this booklet here that we have is for future employees as well to learn what the rules and regulations are for the job. On the part that's for preparing, I think it's missing something for preparing abatements for cleanup. There was talking about preparing cleanup for marijuana. There was talking about preparing for fines. But I wanna make sure that it's added in there, preparing abatements for cleanup. Help prepare for possible receiverships. I didn't see any, anything about receivership mentioned in there. And I think that's something that in the future, as property values go up, that we might need to...
What are your thoughts on that? In general?
That, that, that there needs to be additional language. I'm not on a specific area, like it's talking about code enforcement, personnel duties. And I just wanted to add those to the personnel duties to make sure that that wasn't forgotten for any future employees and also to make sure that those things were thought of as potential resolutions to a...
They would understand, that they would understand the nuances of a receivership. I'm not understanding the...
Says here, prepare documents and presentation for council. Prepare and present to city council. Prepare information to property owners. All of these, and I wanna make sure that those things are added in. Personally, I think they should be added in there. So, when a new employee comes in and they look and they say, this is my job. This is the description of my, my duties. That you would also be preparing abatements for cleanup. You will also be preparing receiverships and so on. Not that that's what they have to do, but that's part of the job description under the titles.
Okay, so under pages two and three?
Under personnel duties, yes.
Interesting, Mr. Folsom?
I think so.
Okay. Mr. Lambert, do you have a question?
I think it's covered. I mean, and the code enforcement, code enforcement officer can't prepare a receivership. It has to be done through the courts.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and it also here says, but not limited to. So, there's, they're, they're not limiting themselves. This is kind of a guideline. They're probably always gonna be looking, that's gonna be added as our city grows and things change. And I think that's why we always put it at not limited to, so that things can be, be added.
But there was a large list, so I thought maybe we could add some rather than just always saying not limited to. But that, I'm good with that. If you don't mind, I'm gonna keep going. What do we do when we, when we have a complaint form that's received? The complaint form is complete and then we end up at like a dead end or at a resolution? Do we contact the person that put in the complaint? Where's the, how is the follow-up with that dealt with?
If they request the contact afterwards, then yes, we follow up with that. But in general, they see the progress made and it's closed out. I mean, unless they specifically ask, they wanna be contacted, then we...
'Cause I didn't see anything about that. If specifically requested for contact, for a follow-up, please contact. I'm not sure if I missed that part, if I was looking for something different.
What page do you want, so I could follow?
I didn't see it, so I don't have a specific page.
That would, would that follow?
I guess it would be a case process for property.
Is that on page seven, the case, request for investigation? Is that what you're talking about? Like what happens from that point on?
Yes.
I guess that's on page seven.
But it doesn't state the specifics of the, again, the policies and procedures.
In other words, you wanna have a conclusion according to the complaint?
If requested by, something along the lines of if requested by complaint to follow up after resolution, to follow up with resolution.
Isn't that kind of a staff direction, though? I mean, isn't that kind of, I don't know if that needs to be in policies and procedures? I think that's just kind of a supervisor's job to make sure follow-up happens. Because otherwise, we can start making these documents really huge, you know? I mean, that's just kind of the supervisor's job to make sure that something like that. I mean, they could have office policies without being in the policies and procedures, just directions of what to do. It should be, the supervisor should be doing that kind of stuff. I mean, do we, where, where would you put it at in here? I mean, if you...
I'm not sure specifically where.
That's the reason, I think that maybe that might just be a direction to say, you know, as a supervisor or administrator, make sure that any new supervisors would know that follow-up needs to happen if this request, and I think that's just kind of going to happen.
Does that happen?
I would be saying, it did.
Yeah, if they request to be contacted afterwards, yes, it happens. We don't contact every complainant and let them know the case has been closed.
Right. But I mean, pretty consistently though, if they did request that contact, that we do.
Very rarely do they request that, but when they do, yeah, we contact them. I mean, usually the violation is so obvious that once it's cleaned up, the complainant or neighbor or someone down the street sees that it's cleaned up and doesn't need a call back.
And two more things. One is the, and I know we've discussed this, and I just kind of want to talk about it publicly. We discussed it during our ad hoc committee for the marketing committee about the revamp on the website. I really want to push hard to make sure that we can submit without having to go through the ordeal of signing in or things like that. There, our website has some issues, make it as simple as possible to submit complaints to you guys. I know we talked earlier also during our budget hearing about smart gov, and hopefully that will open up soon, not soon, but within a reasonable time, so that it can be open to the public to submit their complaints via that, because I think that the eight to five is not always accessible, especially for those that are working from eight to five, to come into city hall and submit a complaint form. And so, and I'm glad that it says within your policies and procedures to, if it's a threat or a grave threat or a hazardous situation, that you guys will fill out the complaint form for them as well and help them out with that. My last part was on the, talked about videos, and does that mean you guys are getting body cams? I forget where that was.
This was just written, like you said, to include things for the future and the possibility of using body cameras?
Because I like that, and hope that in the future, we can find a way to afford that. So I'm glad that's part of the policies and procedures as well. I do have one last final request, I didn't see it on there. It doesn't say anywhere, first and foremost, attempt to make contact verbally or physically. Is there any way we can add that to our policies and procedures?
Is that part of the procedure?
I'm opposed to that, so I mean, unless you direct us to do that, I don't believe contacting every person first is what should be done.
And I'm not saying that we don't do anything until we make that contact, but I know in a conversation with a gentleman at the California Association of Code Enforcement down in Santa Barbara, I believe is where we were, no, that was for LaFco's. That way, wherever we went.
League of Cities.
League of Cities.
Long Beach.
In Long Beach, thank you. One of the first things he said is absolutely, we want to have that verbal contact, because then the chances of having a positive resolution is a lot higher than if we just send paperwork to them.
I also believe we're in a unique situation where we have dirt roads and vacant wooded lots between structures, and it's a huge risk officer safety in a lot of cases, to require that, you know, first initial contact. I think in the officer's judgment, I completely agree, but to require it as a first thing, I think could be.
Is that mandatory?
Exactly.
And I agree that it doesn't need to be mandatory, but I would agree in my ideological mind that the contact of verbally speaking with somebody rather than just submitting a violation where it puts them on the defense, might create a different situation if you feel that it's a comfortable situation to approach. And I'd like to see that if agreed with the rest of the council, added on to the policies and procedures.
That's an officer discretion, you're required to officer discretion?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
On page two, under personnel duties, you list to enforce following, but not limited to, you go down, property maintenance, compliance, marijuana, so on and so forth. You left out business license. It's very important, and we discussed it before over the years about addressing all of our businesses in town, to make sure that they're up to date on their business license. It's required by city ordinance and its revenue.
Again, I think I just listed the main ordinances and laws that we enforce, there are others, like you said, as far as the.
Because you do enforce those.
Yes.
Okay. The second thing is under code enforcement supervisor, his responsibilities, he's whoever maybe at the time that you, Mr. Lambert, responsible for doing personnel investigate evaluations, and if a complaint comes in to investigate that complaint and to come to a resolution on the complaint. I would strongly suggest that the code enforcement supervisor receives some form of formalized supervisory training. And I'm sure it's out there, I know it is for charges for dispatch supervisors, and I would imagine it's out there for surveillance supervisors. Out there, it would assist in this kind of training. It would limit liability down the line for city and greatly assist the supervisor. Keep that in mind in the future.
Yeah, we're working, we're working towards doing that as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Overton?
I agree with Nick. I would personally like to see the licensing put on this list, because it is one of the things that in the past has been neglected, and I think it would just make sure that that is not a neglected thing. It's easy to kind of push that off, because it's not, so I would like to see it on the list. And I think we do need to realize that, you know, we do have, you know, administration here that, you know, is, you know, going to take some of these things that just come up. And I know we want some of this stuff on here, but I don't think it's necessary to like pile this document with a bunch of little stuff. I think, I think our code things are good to have. I think that positions change all the time according to what's happening that day. You know, we know that all our city staff does a lot of different things necessarily not pertaining to their specific job. If we started getting too detailed about this, we could be here all night. So, so I think that I trust my city manager and our council here to make sure that things are followed through with our staff. That's why we have a city manager, is to make sure that our other staff are doing what they need to do. So I think you guys did a pretty good job with most of this, but I do would like, only because I've seen it has been just totally not taken care of in the past, of the business license. It is something that we tend to think isn't as important as everything else, when the reality is it is, because we could be generating money, and there's lots of money the city has missed over the years by not enforcing that. So I would like to see that on this list. What was it, anyone ever heard of, what was the other that you just mentioned?
The at this officer discretion to attempt to have a verbal communication.
Face to face.
Face to face communication.
Initial contact.
Is that something that we would need in this document, or is that something that's just to their discretion? Is it kind of their discretion then? It wouldn't really need to be on here, because it's not really going to be their specific duty? This is more kind of defining some duties for them, so if it's going to be under the discretion, it doesn't need to be in this document?
The reason I bring it up is because I think that for future employees reading and going through policies and procedures, to say at discretion, this would be a really great way to start the case as a procedure, rather than automatically just start to get tagging their offense or sending them letters.
And I agree that calling somebody or talking, you know, talking face to face is good, just trying to figure out if this needs to be in, if it's a, needs to be in the document. So opinions here?
I guess I would pipe in and say, if that's something that the council wishes, that they do consider doing that, that we put it in.
If I may, I think it's a good recommendation. I know that starting a case out that way as an investigator, it starts you off on a good foot, but I do think that we need to allow their latitude, and that should be part of the training of our current staff and also any new staff members that would be coming in, is kind of an A to Z in how you start a case. My recommendation, I don't know that it needs to be in a procedure.
Like a training, more of a training policy than a procedure policy?
That's how I see it, Councilmember.
Well, I mean, at first I thought it didn't really kind of belong there, but I couldn't figure out where I would, how, because I agree with him, I think the first, it would be good if the first contact is.
And maybe I should, in looking at the structure of our new code enforcement ordinance, I know that Mr. Becknell is involved in this and has oversight. How do you feel about that, Mr. Becknell?
I very much object to that, and I will tell you why. The initial contact on the code enforcement process is an inherently adversarial process, and you're putting your officers in a situation, include it into the manual, forcing them into a situation which many times is not going to turn out well. I think that at best, it should be the discretion of the officer, there there, on site. While I understand it would be nice to have a friendly chat with people, the vast majority of the time that people get approached by code enforcement officers, it is not a pleasant experience. So putting it in there and encouraging it is not a good idea. I really, really suggest that you don't. There are situations where it can be appropriate, but I think it needs officer discretion. It's one thing for Steve to approach someone, it's entirely another thing for Tina to approach.
I'm more afraid of Tina than Steve.
Well, change the names, whoever you want, you can make it Chelsea, you can make it whoever you want.
I don't think we need to point out individuals, but.
But what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, is that it is very much officer dependent and situational dependent, and I think it would be very unwise to put that into the manual.
So basically what I said was more in a train situation, when you train it, somebody that comes on, they would be trained that if they feel it's appropriate and they're both safe, and they think that they see somebody standing outside, it's okay for them to talk to them and make that contact first before, which I'm pretty sure they probably do if they see them, am I correct? If you see somebody, say, hey, you know, your yard's getting kind of weedy and all this stuff, you know, you think you can get it cleaned up, and if they say, oh yeah, we'll do it today or tomorrow, you don't cite them, do you?
No, I don't. I do have conversations with people, and I do use my discretion. I drive up and, you know, I see someone out there and they're doing something, like, hey, you know, can you clean up your property? And, you know, we might talk a little, and I said, I'll come back next week, you know, we'll see where we're at.
I'm afraid, yeah, I'm afraid we're getting too.
So I think, yeah, so I think.
Kind of micromanaging a bit. Is there any other comments for this document, Mr. Becknell?
No, I just want to back up what Mr. Becknell said, that my god, I see every day on social media where armed officers are going up to a car just maybe to give a warning, and they're shot at. Thank god they have a vest on in many cases. I would definitely leave it up to the code enforcement officer's discretion. They are trained and they're age 32 now. All of them have common sense. We do suggest that if it's appropriate that they make that contact, that's fine, but to put it in documentation and make it kind of a gotcha type thing if they don't, I'm against it.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the conversation on that, I agree with you guys. I just was wanting to bring it up, so thank you for that. One thing that I don't see here, and it was kind of talked about during our conversation about the properties we were assessing, is I'm looking at, I had to back up for a second, it's either noticing or performing an investigation. I don't see anything that says, it says case notes while performing initial investigation, but it doesn't say anything about violations inside the performing an investigation and creating the paper trail, or during the noticing, it doesn't say violations, and I know we talked about having all violations. And for instance, the fence that you said that you would be looking into after this situation, I would have liked to see the fence involved in, we wanted you to clean up the whole situation, even if the hoop house typically goes along with the cleaning of the grow, I'd like to see that as a violation to ensure that they know what they're supposed to be, what our resolutions are, that way we don't make it longer than 121 days that we're already looking at typically, when we're looking at a violation of a case. So I am looking somewhere to say all violations noted, it says photographs of violations, but it doesn't say written statement of violations on there. Maybe I'm just not seeing it, or maybe I'm looking for too much specifics.
There is a paragraph, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, but under C, performing an investigation, the paragraph two states upon the conclusion of the initial investigation, if the officer determines that violations do exist on the subject property, he or she will open a code enforcement case using the database tracking program. I don't know what, I don't know if you're looking for something else specifically?
I think I've received complaints, and essentially that the violations seem to trickle in to the property owner, they'll be noticed on two or three violations, they'll take care of those, then they'll say, now that you got those done, the code enforcement officer, well, now you've got these other three that would like you to work on. Instead of doing that, let the property owner know in advance all the violations that are currently observed in their integrity, and then ask that they, those be abated within a reasonable amount of time, but that's up to you and your discretion on what a reasonable amount of time is. But I think, and as I said, myself personally, that's what I've been asked of for our code enforcement, is let us know everything that needs to be cleaned up, and we'll get right on it and clean it up. But coming in saying, fix the roof, I fixed the roof, and coming back saying, fix the windows, I fixed the windows, and I think it streamlined it, make it a little easier.
If I can add something, sometimes, sometimes we'll go somewhere and there'll be multiple violations, and we tell them, we'll talk to them, there's so many, they feel overwhelmed, and we might start a case on two violations, and once they clear that up, then we'll come back and we'll go ahead and we'll do another case. And some people like that, because they don't want to be overwhelmed with 70, 80.
You're doing it every day.
So I mean, it's, it's almost a case by case on some of these things.
Well, that's a complaint that I've received on a couple of different occasions.
I've received the same complaint too, and it has been addressed. I think a lot of times too, though, say you cite someone for a bunch of garbage and junk in their front yard, and it's, they clean it up, well, now you can see the broken down car behind the fence. So a violation that's cleared may reveal another violation. So to put it in writing that all violations have to be addressed at one time within a specific certain time.
Well, I want to put it in writing, I was just thinking procedurally.
There's another training thing to that, that's where the, you know, the training part would come in too.
Other than that, great job. I'm really glad we've got this and we're moving forward, we're going in the right direction. Thank you. Any other comments?
Make a resolution?
No, we need to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Councilmember Overton, you got something to go like that?
Yes, no, I just want to make the resolution if you're ready for it.
Hold on, I got a question by Vice Mayor.
Yeah, is this only internal, or is this accessible to the public?
No, it's accessible.
To the public? Can we add our phone number and our web address? I see our logo and I see, I think our city hall address, I'm wondering if we can add all our contact information, maybe add an email address so we can send, have people know where to, there's no contact information that I was able to see.
But that's it? Because it's personnel policies and procedures, it's not for the public to be able to contact.
Was your answer that this is accessible to the public?
It's available for them to review, I believe, yes.
And so I think anything that's available to the public should have all of our contact information that's needed in order to contact public, public works, code enforcement, rather than just having a logo and address. That, to me, that's not enough, that's a sample of a form, and you'd have to really look for that, but I think somewhere in the manual, there should be all the contact information. My suggestion, if it's made accessible to the public.
Okay, so when you approve the resolution, then just include the changes of adding business licensing, and then adding the city website and contact information to the front?
If you guys agree with that, that is.
I would put the website on there, but the contact information could down the line for some reason change.
Well, it could be 99. Well, it could be 994-8201. I don't see that anywhere on there.
This is the way I look at this, and I know that we had that discussion, is this is the personnel manual. It is open to the public because we're a public entity. But we don't have to put our address and phone numbers and stuff on a personnel binder here. That's what this is. This is the personnel. This isn't for the public to come in and critique. This is our personnel manual. It's for the city people. Yes, it is open to the public, but it's not for them to go in and make comments on and that we're going to change anything. So it's not really a comment period. This is the comment period. Once this is over, comment period is done until it comes back to us again. So it's not necessary for us to put all that stuff because they're right. If we change things, we move things, things happen and websites change, stuff like that, then you have to go through that. Yeah, it's a nightmare policy when you start doing that on documentation.
I'm confused. To clarify, you're asking that the code enforcement contact number, telephone number, be included on the...
Not necessarily code enforcement number, just how to contact the city.
City Hall.
Because if I'm getting, if I'm getting...
On the website, it's there.
Well, that's asking somebody to go to the website to find the phone number. Well, we could just print the phone number. Here's my situation. I'm receiving a citation from code enforcement. I want to know what the rules and what the policy and procedures are for code enforcement because I disagree with what they just sent me or how they're dealing with the case.
Both avenues for obtaining that information would involve going to this location, which has all the information that we're going to...
I'm not quite sure why it's so scary to put our phone number for our city hall and our address on a piece of paper.
Because it's policies and procedures for employees and the public has access to read it. But when you have to start changing these things, then it has to come to the council and go all over again.
Mr. Becknell?
This manual is not a policy and procedure manual only for employees. This is a, this is a policy and procedural manual for the council, for employees, and the public. So everyone understands what the process is and how the process operates. So putting the city's website on it is perfectly appropriate. And certainly putting city hall's phone number on it is not a problem at all with, you know, with code enforcement. But it is intended to be available to the public for them so that they understand what the process is. Because otherwise, they have to ask the code enforcement officer and/or member of the staff and you run the risk of getting five different answers to the same question. This way it's in the manual, available to everybody. And that was the intent of this.
So one notice that you post does have contact information for the subjecting officer?
Correct. Every notice we post has contact information for city hall and the direct officer's extension and email address.
Thank you.
Can I clarify, are we adding the information or...?
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to a, oh, I gotta, I gotta look at what I'm approving. I'd like to make a motion to approve the City of Clear Lake Code Enforcement Division Policy and Procedures Manual with the changes noted by Mr. Lambert, which was the addition of the business license and the addition of city contact, main city contact information.
So phone number and website, please.
I have a motion in a second by Councilman Overton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. And coming down to item 15, consideration of approval of the photo contest for the city website for building buildings. Ms. Swanson?
All right. Honorable Mayor and council members, as I stated in the budget workshop, we are beginning a revamp of our website. And we would like to propose a contest open to Clear Lake residents based on the May 17th Marketing Committee meeting for pictures to display on the website and in city-owned buildings such as city hall, community, the community center, and the visitor center. The proposal is for the pictures to be from several categories, such as city parks, city events, city buildings, historical photos, and a free form category, which would be, anything that doesn't fit in those categories. So the pictures would have to be recognizably Clear Lake and the winners would be displayed on the website or hung in, and/or hung in city-owned buildings and given a certificate of recognition. So if the council approves the contest, we would develop a photo release waiver form for the entries. And the contest would run from June 1st through August 10th, with the marketing committee reviewing the entries and recommending winners to the council for the August 24th meeting.
Thank you. Any member of the public wishing to address this item, please step forward. Seeing now I'll bring it back. Vice Mayor.
Do we know what size we'll be printing these?
Not at the moment. Well, that'll probably be missed out.
Any other questions?
I love the idea.
I think it's a great idea. Do we have approval? Councilmember Harris?
I just need a consensus.
You like it?
Yeah.
Harris likes it. Overton, you like it? Bennett, you like it?
Yeah.
I think you got consensus.
Thank you.
Good. Well, Mr. Folsom, it's time for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. We talked about several of these during the budget workshop, but since we didn't have an overwhelming turnout from the public, let me just reiterate some of the wonderful news that we discussed.
Take points.
The project at 18th and Phillips, which is to repave all of that, a good portion of Phillips between, no, I don't have the specifics in front of me right now. But, do you remember?
The 18th aborted?
It might.
18th aborted.
I know, that's what I've been discussing.
Yeah. And anyway, we're going to be repaving that bedroom, widening. We're going to be adding in a bike lane. That's going to be starting in the next couple of weeks, beginning of June. And we should have that done this summer, so that's very exciting. It's about a $2 million project, so...
Who's projected for that project to be done by August, late August?
We're finalizing a completion date right now, so I don't want to give a specific date, but this summer. So that was great information. Also, the abandoned vehicle authority, we had a meeting last week. The money's been dispersed. We finalized all our contracts. They started towing on Monday. To date, as of today, we've tagged 170 vehicles. Forty vehicles have been towed and 34 were gone on arrival, which means they were self-abated. So that's great also. So just a couple of things of really great news. We also had a marketing committee, as was discussed last week, where we discussed updating the website and the photo contest. Wanted to let you all know, if you aren't aware now, that Juanita Coell's last day is next week, June 1st. So if you can, go in and say congratulations to her on happy retirement and she's done a great job for us. So just wanted you all to know that. Also, we are planning a joint workshop with the city council and the Measure V Oversight Committee. The date that we've come up with is June 22nd. That seemed to work for the majority of the council and for the majority of the Measure V Committee. We're looking at four o'clock. I just want to make sure that you all have that availability, June 22nd, so right before the...
32nd, four o'clock.
Yeah, right before the, June 22nd, city council meeting, so four o'clock. So if anyone has a problem, let me know. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Overton? What have you been up to?
More than what I probably have time to report, so we just cut it downs. I met over at Al Millie with some of the residents there at their little community place there just to kind of see where they guys, you know, if there was anything that they'd like to see done and they liked the way the city's moving forward. They appreciate the council, was very positive. Used to meet there at least once a year and wasn't always so positive. But I really felt good that everybody really feels like we're moving in the right direction. So I'm really happy that that was a whole different, no complaints, really, no complaints. I was thrilled. We went to LaFco on the 17th. We elected Susan Lyons as a public alternate. And so we were, and we also approved the budget for next year, also at the marketing committee. And let's see here. Met with the, we had the Healthy Leadership Network. I sit on a smaller group of five, sometimes six. We're putting together, we do, we work with the roadmap, the health roadmap and ranking. So we're looking to have a meeting later on next month. Hopefully, if you guys get a notice, you please come because it's kind of important for us to kind of stay on top of that, move our city into that healthy mode. Let's see, graduation this coming week for our Woodland College. I'll let Bruno kind of take that one on. I had a senior center board meeting last night. We will be working on our building. Instead, we'll have somebody doing lead eating there this week and then we're going to start working on getting that fixed. We're just waiting for the weather to get a little better. My board, the board knows that they needed to take care of that. So hopefully that will be a really nice new view there on that corner and kind of do some spruce it up for Phil's place. Phil's been really great about helping there too, so I'm going to skip that cleanup. So I really appreciate the extra effort. And also our mayor, who does the extra effort to come to our community building and mow our lawn. So he's a true working mayor. He just shows up and does that for the community. So it's nice to have the council members that pitch in to do those kind of things. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harris?
Well, I did attend the AVA meeting as well. And at that time, we had 120 vehicles tagged, so it's grown considerably in just a week's time. That's fantastic news. In addition to that, I took an opportunity here over this last weekend. We had quite a bit of visitors to our community because of the fishing. We had, we had four bass tournaments and a catfish, a local catfish derby. And I took that opportunity to go down. I'm not much of a fisherman. I've tried, but I'm not good at it. So I went down to actually meet the fishermen that had come here and to see what kind of the impact they were having on Thompson Harbor there. And I found it very interesting to get the feedback from the fishermen. Many of them that I spoke to had said that they hadn't been up here fishing in many, many years. They came because of the reports of such great fishing, but also they had heard some positive things about our community. And I think that was really a huge takeaway from the conversations. In fact, the one thing that I asked was, what would you like to see change about our community to better suit the needs of the fishermen that come to these tournaments? And consistently, I heard a request for vendors at those events. So definitely something to look at. Obviously, our Chamber of Commerce may be able to organize that, but definitely a request for coffee and donuts and any other kind of fishing-related vendors to be present at those events, which are, you know, fantastic, obviously, for our community. So that was literally requested by the fishermen themselves, so I thought that that was neat. And I'm just really grateful that they're choosing to come to our community again and that they're saying such nice things and praising our community and taking that back with them to their communities to spread the word. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Beck?
Not much going on. Again, the AVA meeting, that's got a good kickoff with the number of vehicles towed. I think it's estimated we will be receiving close to $100,000 on our next payout. Am I correct?
Assuming we keep up the number of towels that we do in relation to what the rest of the county and Lakeport does, then yeah, we'll get the lion's share of the money.
Based on population and the number of vehicles towed. So other than that, it was fairly quiet two weeks.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also went to LaFco. I think one of the good news that came out of LaFco is that they had been requesting to increase the fees that the cities, county, and special districts were going to pay for the following year. And we found the money within the budget of LaFco to not request the increasing fees. I think everybody was relieved that we didn't have to request that. I also went to the ad hoc committee. Kind of felt bad, but I am happy that we are wanting to change so much on our website. It's not that we don't like it, we want it to be that much better. And so I'm looking forward to the changes happening. Hopefully, we can trickle in some of those changes rather than waiting this full six months, and we'll see if that's possible. I forgot to thank last time in my report. I had an Earth Day Festival in the park after we did the citywide cleanup. And there was also Andy Day that happened at that time. And I really appreciate seeing the explorers taking part in that event. So if you could please pass a thank you. Stephanie Green that was there with a few of the explorers. And so really appreciate seeing them being part of the community like that. On May 20th, there was a lot of activity happening in our city. Councilmember Harris already mentioned the catfish derby, which the park was packed with boats. It was a beautiful sight to see. And then also in Austin Park, Lake County Office of Education was doing a Hero Project event. And knowing that we had two Public Works workers, one at the catfish derby and one at the Austin Park event, to make sure that everything was taken care of. Again, I mentioned this last time for the Earth Day Festival. I appreciate seeing that because I've been in situations where the power goes out and I'm all alone and I'm calling the PD to see if they can call Public Works. And so having them there brings a whole new level of commitment from the city to support those types of events. And I really like that. So thank you so much. Please pass the thank you on to Alex and Justin for helping out that day. I also went to the Art House Gallery where they were showing off the artwork that the youth had created for the nature murals that they're looking to have people sponsor. I saw some good art over there. They're going to be adding more artwork. And some of it I will be discussing at the next ad hoc committee for marketing to see if maybe we'd want to look at it from that perspective, from marketing, on how it is that we can use that art. I had a random conversation with one of our taxi drivers who claims that he is seeing 50% less cars that are abandoned on the usual trips that he takes. And he really appreciates what's happening. So if he's seeing the difference, I'm sure those who aren't traveling the streets as much are already seeing the difference as well. And the last one is, I went to the Clear Lake Healthy Collaborative. We watched a movie called Resilience, which is all about the adverse childhood experiences, whether it's divorce, whether it's parents take them to prison, abuse, anything of the kind. And we'll be coming back in the next meeting, which is on the third Thursdays of each month, to discuss maybe what kind of action we want to take and what adverse effect we want to look at trying to decrease in our community. So I'm looking forward to that, and that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's been busy. We have a lot going on. I'd just like to announce, since we only have a couple of days before our next meeting, our visitor center is about ready to have its grand opening and ribbon cutting, June 10th. Pretty exciting. I'm excited to be there. Something else going on, June 10th?
Yes, sir.
Lieutenant?
Yes, the annual K-9 fundraiser event at the community center.
And you accept donations even if folks aren't able to come?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's wonderful because that supports our great K-9 program.
Absolutely. Our K-9 program is completely funded through donations outside of the officer salaries.
So thank you for that plug. Appreciate it. Anyway, went to the League of Cities meeting. Legislative Committee had a hearing or had a meeting on May 19th in Fort Bragg. Just want to commend our folks at the league. They're doing good work. We had several items of both requiring support and opposition happening in Sacramento. In particular, one particular bill that will help small cities and funding for parks, particularly neighborhoods or subdivisions that are missing parks. So I thought the city, our city would do well with that. Another one that is being pushed through by some of the cellular companies that would, without authority from or authorization from the city... without authority from or authorization from the city to put small, what the heck, essentially wireless and Wi-Fi access on any city owned whole building. And they're opposing that, lights without reimbursement or fees to be paid to the city for that. Anyway.
For approval.
Yeah, for the approval. So anyway, I'd like to thank Councilman Overton for also being there. Again, good meeting and good things happening there. I'm just going to wrap it up with that. That was on consent. No way. Hold it. The Vice Mayor just announced that he's forgotten and he'd like to have more time.
And Councilmember Overton tried to lead me in the right direction and I just completely fell off the path. Woodland Community College is going to have their certificate graduation and their degree graduation this Friday, May 26th, at the Conacta Education Center, at the Cornellson Events Center.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Certificate graduation will be at 3:00 PM. Degree graduation is at 7:00 PM. And I invite everybody to come and celebrate those that chose the path of education to make sure that they can be successful in their lives.
I'm not able to attend, but I completely did my best to the team. I appreciate it.
I will do.
You have a question, Mr. Harris?
You had mentioned the K-9 dinner. Where would a person obtain the tickets for that K-9 dinner?
You can get them through any K-9 officer or handler and those are, or agitator, sorry. That would be detectives Cook and Sergeant Lins, Officer Parsons and Officer Harden.
And you're still accepting donations for auction items and that sort of thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then one other question, the ribbon cutting, what time is that for the June 10th?
We're going to have the chamber here, 11:30 meeting to discuss that. I believe it's around 11:30.
I think it's 11:30.
I'd be afraid to miss that one, so.
Be very afraid. Okay. One last thing. Hike for hospice, also June 10th. I don't know that I can be in both places. Hospice is an awesome organization in our county, helping those who lost loved ones get through that process and the loved ones themselves as they're on their final days here with us. Anyway, great program, great support, and if you're interested in that, get sponsors to donate to your walk and that all those funds go to hospice of Lake County. And do we have anything for consent or looking for consent for future agenda items? Nothing? Nothing? Then I believe we're adjourned. Two, we close session.